Good evening. We'll be starting on the great parents and family meeting for Thursday, August 10. Uh, we soon to have a major resourceful 2020 orders and spending some provisions of the meeting law and Governor Taylor's March 29th, 2023 revised order. City's moral certification by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting for Penny will be conducted both in in person and by our most patient to the greatest extent possible. Civic information and a general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and the parties. The right funeral requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website. For this meeting, members of the public and any members mentioned being in person or for those who issued self publicly. May by following the instructions on agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceeding from real time by technological means. In addition, if you don't have MGL 7C 30A section 20F after notified the chair or public body. Any person may make a video or audio recording of a session of a meeting of a public body. Or may transmit meeting through any medium at the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recording. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listings of the agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed out of the meeting. All items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent committed by law. And finally, per section 241, one of the town code, except for procedural or housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address board on any item. It requires a vote at the time for a board votes on that item. So residents will be allowed as much time as a bonus that item is permitted. So this meeting is being recorded uh because Malcolm's participating, we need to uh.
Yes.
For all tenants, we'll do um attendance. So Malcolm.
Here.
Uh, John.
Here.
Randy Nelson here. Uh, Jonathan.
Here.
Justin Kane here. Jeremy Eaton. I think Jeremy. What? Jeremy said, I don't think Jeremy said that. He may, he may try another. Um, okay, so we will get started on our first order business four A's or you can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know how you listen.
It's just your fault. Yeah.
You got it. You got it there. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Reese and Pam Chad, who own two houses at the bottom of West Avenue. Right adjacent to McConaughey PD Ethics. Um, and um, the uh.
They own this one.
Yep.
The.
One's a commercial building and one's a.
Yeah, I, I would go in the building. So honestly, I don't know what was happening in the buildings. Um, well, I, well, this one, I know this one's where they live.
Yeah, that's their house.
That's their house. They want to sell this building on.
Yeah.
This, this building owns the bulk of the land currently. And their, their home is just on a small parcel.
Just that.
So yeah, basically. So they wanted to keep the bulk of the land with your home, which they're keeping and sell. The one building on the north side. It's in an R1A and an R2 zoning district. Um, we showed the zoning. I'm relaying the zoning line and. The two zoning districts. I think this pressure's both me. The volume.
I know. Question. Basically, these. While we're both. Yes. If this thing. Why? Very good. Probably, I hear. Probably initiate now. When is a funding.
I, I can't hear anything that Jonathan just said.
Don't think it will be that for.
So this is just a general question. Which is if. If a lot is in two zones. And the frontage is complying with the smaller zone. But they want to build in the bigger zone. Is that? That's totally true.
If the lot was vacant. Uh, and they were to build in the back.
Yeah.
We would want the lot to comply with the zoning in the back.
Even though the frontage is.
Yeah, I, I think that would be the conservative approach.
That's the way, for what it's worth. And now, now I'm a surveyor, gonna leave a little.
And I wasn't just a planner either.
But I have always been educated that you have to meet the frontage requirement for the zoning district that you're building. I mean, it's not often to happen a lot, but it actually happened on, on some kind of cross. Johnson, you probably involved there, made some lots that actually were in all for.
Across town lines. Yeah.
Across the town line. That's what we made them meet more stringent frontage requirement.
It's not remaining this for just for instance.
Yeah.
It's good. And, and so then in terms of needing area requirement, slot one is needing the R1A.
I, I think it needs, I think it needs ball.
Is that one A or?
No, you know how much you can reduce it, but it's got a lot of that town wide.
Oh, okay. You can reduce it if I have. Yeah, okay.
You can reduce it then. Yeah, so.
I'll move to endorse.
Okay, so motion to endorse for a second.
I was thinking.
That's a right away into the house. Get something better. The neck long to the back. Little back. No, little back. Back. Yeah. That's about the other one. What's your last? Yeah. Use that theory instead of going on, but that was up to the house that he used.
Yeah.
Yes, it is very steep. It's also not going to be right away.
But that's, that's not rust.
Right now. Okay, so we have a motion. Second, do we have any further discussion? And Malcolm, did you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Anything for any camera. Okay, all right. So we'll have Malcolm. Malcolm will start with you.
Uh, yes.
You have me. Pedro. Donovan.
Hi.
Randy. Hi. All right. Um, a little 10.
I'm going to bring a sharpie down. Do you love it to jump? I hope maybe so they would answer that.
Was Mr. Mr. Bet's house built without any?
Uh, I was back in the daily. Well, the other one was like. Uh, no, it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be black anymore as much. Yeah. I usually only bring my own utensils because I want some homes to bring me better, something more of a sign with the little sporting that I get out of the green.
Or green.
Signatures.
Um, this is one copy we needed. Two more, right? Can you do one or most of them? Shouldn't be important than two.
No.
Don't miss them.
Yeah. Even still today, I had a meeting with somebody I hadn't seen in person in three, three and a half years.
Last time I was upstairs when in town, huh?
So I, do I need to sign that at some point or?
No, pretty soon. As I got to.
Okay.
You'll be marked as, as absent, Malcolm.
You can sign for me, Chris.
During the year in the meeting.
It's.
On a day.
I was pretty.
Sure.
But if you put the day in there, it would be. Thank you so much.
And.
Thank you. What, what? Well, it's still like, you know, it's a little bit special. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which are approvals and it's uh, uh, July 27, 2023.
As a member.
I, yeah, I made a, a correction. There was one that was a.
Special permit.
Marked as a special permit, but it was a site plan. So I corrected that. Yeah.
Right. So the motion has been amended.
Yeah.
By Jonathan, Julie, how is that good? Pedro seconds. Do we have any discussion in a minute? Hearing none, Malcolm?
Yes.
Jonathan.
I'm.
Pedro. Jeremy.
Hi.
Randy. I. Great, thank you. Um, I have a brief discussion of the I zone location and purpose. Um, and so in terms of this, Pedro and I were talking about the I zone. And the fact that the I zones uh do not allow residential. Correct?
None, sorry.
And they uh are ultimately located primarily in the. And I think so just that the discussion is just in terms of some overarching. Planning um exercise is I something we feel as a community, we want to continue to have in some way shape or form. And Pedro, what else did you want to add?
Well, just that I do, the housing. Allowably. I think you mean years. You really, really, right? Maybe, maybe, maybe.
So seemingly some like uh in the terms.
There is some history to.
Yeah.
So I need Moonies.
The other hand raised.
You know, um, you want to comment on that? I'm going to get up and disclose the door.
Eileen, you're unmuted if you.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say it's very difficult to understand some of you.
I, I agree with you. I didn't hear any of that last conversation.
It's, it's good to have affirmation.
Yeah.
So in terms of, of the I zone, did you hear what I said or did you not hear that?
I couldn't understand anything Pedro said or um what you were referring to because I didn't hear what Pedro said.
Go ahead.
So I'll, I'll start again. So um board members, let's talk to the owl. Um, because sometimes it can't hear us unless we're directing her speech or at it. Um, so just in terms of the I zone, wanting to have a discussion about um relevance of the I zone, you know. Does it continue to serve a purpose and a function in the community? And Pedro has mentioned um that there is some inconsistency in the application of residential uses in the I zone. Um, with single family and, and multifamily. So, you know, is that, is that something? In terms of our large scale planning efforts that we want to think up and look at for refining or modifying. So I mean, I know you had provided me an email with a little bit of history on the I zone. Did you want to comment on that?
Oh, well, years ago, when I was secretary, about two secretaries before Kim. Planning Board members, it obviously goes back a long time. Planning Board members wanted I zones. To put into areas where they assumed that there could be no development because of flood plains or wetlands. Or pasture. And so that's how many of the, if not all of the I zones were created. Nobody, nobody would want to build there and therefore the land was safe.
And, and so can, can I ask a naive question then? Is that sort of a backdoor way to prevent industry from coming in? Because why would industry build there either?
Exactly. The idea was that the land was, excuse me, the land would be kept.
Undeveloped.
Undeveloped.
Because it is a resource carrier. Okay. No, that's, that's helpful. Okay. Pedro, did you want to try again speaking directly to the owl? Women making any additional comment on I zone?
You know, the, the only thing that you haven't touched on is just. You know, the possibility that we see. Or just possibility, but we just see actually. Uh, the incompatibility of some uses that go into the I zone in relationship to the zone that's around it, which is all residential. But I just had a question about that. Um, just last week, as you remember, we had a. Oh, marijuana right next to the brand new affordable housing property. And for some people, for one month out of the year, that's going to be notions. Brilliant conversation. We saw it also, I don't know, either a year and a half ago or two years ago on Van Duzen, same situation.
Yeah, I mean, actually, in terms of I zone, I mean, my, my personal opinion is that, you know. Per the information I need to share with us, my observation is that those are relatively undevelopable areas. Um, that said, I would be hesitant to preclude having zones that could be developed for. Um, industrial purposes, just because I don't want to like. Move. Options in the community. Unless we were getting some feedback from the community and we don't think we're ever going to be industrial. I mean, the history of this community has an industry in it, right? So do we really want to close that door um for, for future?
And a lot of the I zones have. And storage industrial buildings on.
Sure.
That's why I think it's not consistent for all.
Not.
Some of them already have.
Right.
Industrial.
Right. Well, whether it's the compound. Correct?
Some of them look.
So this. When zoning was, when the zoning map was first created in the 30s. In the 1930s, a lot of these areas that are now industrial were already developed with. Uh, river associated and or railroad associated industrial production and distribution uses. So there was already that legacy. The 1930s and 40s maps said that the whole town is residential.
It wasn't until the 50s and 60s that the town said those should really be industrial areas. And that's when they first appeared on the zoning map was in the 50s and I think 1960. And it was just I, it was just industrial. There was no such thing as I2 yet. Um, the I zones included all the Monument Mills areas. Um, the Rising Mill. What's now uh AmeriGas on Van Duzenville Road, which was home gas.
Or no.
Or Mel's. Nolan's uh. Nolan Drive did not exist yet. Um, and. The, the history Nolan Drive went back and forth. It was industrial and residential, then industrial again, as it is now. Uh, so that was remapped a few times, extended, expanded, changed a few times. Uh, there was industrial um on Chrissy Road, which was nuclear components and some factories and businesses over there. Um, there was I zone in the back of where like the hotels on Stockbridge Road are. And that's probably, that was probably, as Eileen said, one of the undevelopable areas. There were I zones downtown along the railroad tracks. Kimball Fuel, John B. Hall Fuel. Uh, the railroad area, the Magadini Freight Yard, back on the back of Gas House Lane and High Street and Rossiter Street. Those were all traditionally industrial areas and then south of. Um, south of like the senior center was all industrial as well. And because there were legacy uses and the railroad was there and there was. In the 60s, it, it was about roads and railroads and transportation and heavy industry. And so that's. They were, they were located in those areas. They were mapped in those areas because of existing uses and all of the hoped for uses at the time. Bill Shine could probably tell us a lot more if he did a story. And then. Was there any industrial use actually at the south end of town? Um, industrial in terms of uh car repair, gas stations. It was automobile related primarily. And then uh I'll, I'll yield in just a, just a second. And uh. I think it was maybe in the 2000s where the planning board saw some of the areas. Oh, I forgot the I zones included the log home site on Bridge Street, the Dolby Floris site. And uh where the Searle School is now and where the Iredale. Packaging facility is down on River Street. That was all industrial zone. So it was in the 2000s where the Bridge Street industrial zone became B3. To encourage redevelopment of the Searle School and the Log Home Site, et cetera. And the I2 was created along the railroad tracks back here downtown in order to allow for multifamily. And I think the original I zone was created particularly for business and industry, both those existing and those hoped for. And it intentionally created a one acre requirement for, for residential uses in, in order, in my opinion, to keep residential out of those areas and to preserve it as a business. Productive area. That's what I think. Uh, that's how I think it evolved based on what I, what I've seen.
Eileen.
I remember that. The residential use. That was an attempt to restrict and Nolan and, and, and I think there, there was land on. Stockbridge Road that was industrial at one point because. So uh, planning board members did not want that particular parcel developed.
When, when this planning board looked at Stockbridge Road a few years ago and uh saw some of the industrial zones, um. It. It remapped it and expanded the B2 there, but changed some of the B2 uses in order to possibly allow for some of those. Light industrial, recognizing that industry isn't like paper plants and smoke stacks and noxious things necessarily anymore.
You know, people that are practicing.
Yeah.
Woodworking or stuff.
Um, so there's been, I think, some. You know, recognition that industry probably wasn't what we thought it would be in the 1960s and changing and. In some cases, the use of industrial use and a business use and sometimes a residential use can all be in the same place. The mills and Houstonic um received the mill overlay district as well as a 40R smart growth multifamily overlay district. So that is explicitly acknowledging that all those uses could combine in some way. You know, a craft. Studio and woodworking and other things could exist in a mill next door to a mill that is residential apartments. Particularly heavy uses or noxious uses, generally the planning board in the town has said those will be considered, but by special permit only. And that includes the proposal two weeks ago for the marijuana growing. So it's not allowed by right. So it could be uncompatible as people on, on, in the Nolan Drive area. You know, came and said this would be incompatible here. Marijuana cultivation would, would be incompatible. So that went through this special process in order to. Set it to you. And the same with, with the one that the planning board saw. Last minute. Is this compatible? And the stuff where they'll have to decide that. So that's how we got to where we are, I think.
Okay. All right. So just in terms of modifying it, I think some of the questions are around whether or not we can even. See any application of the residential use type. And. I think it really good point because it really makes sense to restrict single family, but allow with your family. I don't remember where the rationale there was. Um. I, I am personally will resident of encourage any more residential development in, in an I zone.
I would say that. The allowance in the I2 to allow multifamily to be more flexible in possibly allowing multifamily rather than a single family. Was specifically included. Torres were rowhouse type of situation that was more compatible with it. Uh, no, they're by Zoom only tonight. Where the hell?
Okay.
But. You, you can catch the wifi and just. Oh, okay. Um, yeah. Um, no, I, I think the allowing multifamily was probably judged to be more in keeping with an industrial zone. Whereas a single family home in the middle of an industrial zone would. Would push business people's out.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, which is not what an industrial zone. It should be to. To business.
So I think, you know.
It seems incompatible, but I think there was a rationale. And it does still make sense in some way.
I wanted to take picture or thing for Malcolm. Malcolm, did you have any questions about the history or do you have any particular thoughts on? Whether or not we should take this up as an item um in our zoning, uh, possible zoning amendments for the year?
Um, I mean, I, I do think it's inconsistent. Uh, well, first of all, I think that uh it's beneficial to have. Reserved places for business uh and light industrial in the town. Um, and I do think that uh there's a lot of protection in site plan review for the neighboring residential areas, protecting them from noxious uh. Uh, neighbors. Uh, I do think it's kind of inconsistent though to require a special permit for a single family allowed by right two and three units and then not allow it all. Um, uh, more than three units. Uh, so I, I, you know, I, I think going down through that stripe, it might be beneficial to review what we allow and don't allow in the I, in the I2 zones. Um, just to confirm that that's still what we want as a town.
And I'll add, if I may, it's true that um the multiple unit, multi-family, multi-unit. Developments are not allowed by right or by special permit in the I zones. Um, so it does seem inconsistent. You're right, Malcolm. But. Where multi-unit development could make sense, the Houstonic Mills, the Rising Mill. The town has already instituted zoning in order to allow for the type of multi-unit development. That would be. At least at the time, what the town thought would be beneficial in the mills. The mill overlay district for uh, for the Houstonic Mills. If you want to do multifamily, okay, that's great. You can do it. It's by special permit in the, in the mill overlay district, but. You have to preserve buildings. You have to provide access to the river, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not allowed by right. It's by special permit in the overlay. Because the town also wants to get certain benefits out of it. Um, and the 40R, the smart growth zone that's in Houstonic and over the Rising Mill. That does allow it by right. Remember, it does allow multifamily by right. If and only if there's an affordable component and there's, there are certain design guidelines in the 40R. So on the face of it, the table of use regulation says no. But if you dig a little bit further into the code and what this board has done and the town has approved over the last. Eight to 10 years, um, it is actually uh allowed. Multifamily, multi-unit is actually allowed in those areas.
So uh, go ahead, Malcolm.
By special permit.
In the, in the mill.
Yes, not in the Escada. Okay.
By right in the, in the smart growth areas.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so I have another thought, but I just want to continue to kind of struggle with everyone in terms of. Do we want to spend some time? I think we're sort of like feeling that, that I get, right? It's hard to learn about the whole industry. So because I really appreciate you. We get like, I think we're sort of like feeling that that I get, right? It's hard to learn about the whole history of, because I really appreciate you um. Putting that recollection together and and for I mean helping us.
No question.
I couldn't understand what Brandy was saying.
I was just thinking Chris for doing some research to help us recall the history of the I. And asking Jeremy uh his opinion on whether or not we should revisit this item. Um, as one of our exercises. Yep.
Yeah, Malcolm. Yeah.
You're gonna have to speak back me.
Yes, so okay, uh I think we should um. As I, you know. We don't have to get very deep into it. Recently brought this up is I'm a big believer in the I zone. I think if you do something else that allows some business, could allow some. As you said, some crafts uh. Some manufacturing, small goods and that, but I just, you know, see it. From, let's say, from a monetary point of view. I haven't lived next to an I zone from a developing point of view, if I look at the I zone, I'm not gonna leave. So I think it's centered and I don't think industry is coming back with. That it wasn't. I don't think.
Sure.
So, okay, I think about those things and also think about the sort of birth of developable land that we had last and. Lots of eyes on. That that could be uh the south part of town, obviously a little more tricky, but other areas. Explain some of them.
Something?
Uh, I think it's worth looking at the table of uses. I'm not in favor of doing away with the I zone because. Not sure exactly what's gonna happen in the future, but. God forbid someone should actually want to bring jobs that is.
Jackie?
I'd like to say to what John.
Okay, alright, um alright, and and I guess the only other thing maybe we could do at the same time is review the actual uses. That are occurring at those I zone properties now, because I think the one on North Plain Road is under conservation.
Yes, one eighty, one ninety North Plain Road uh on the railroad tracks side. It's owned by Stanton now. And um I I think for a time that. That that was probably one of the areas where people. Hoped to preclude any development and and they all in that in.
No.
It's it's totally preserved as agricultural land now, so the 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 use is permanently agriculture. Um, and it's, there's no reason to remap it. When we did the master plan, you know, ten, twelve years ago. There was a strategy to, there was a a. Action item to look at I zones like that. And to see if there was developable land or prime farmland and go one way or the other. And in this case, the private market took it to agriculture, which which was good, I think.
Chris, are those notes possibly available? Because that's kind of where my head was going, like, let's look at what they have for sewer and water infrastructure. And really, they don't have sewer and water infrastructure, but they're not even gonna be great for um for residential development. And it it is kind of a a mishmash. The ones that are on Van de Zimbel Road and North Plain Road. Probably have water but not sewer.
I I don't know how extensive the notes are, but the the write-ups would be in the land use goals sections of the master plan, either in volume one or two. There is discussion of. The the relative value of those areas either for residential development or. You know, light industrial production, distribution, repair uses is what I kind of call. Industrial now it is.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, but you're just blowing in a happy hour.
Either the the idea that the I zone would lose development. Particularly precious resource area. Those were going to allow industrial uses to develop there if somebody were to come and bring jobs to town. I mean, I don't understand that. It doesn't make any sense.
I I don't know. I I think Eileen's recollection may be true in some of the areas that became I zones. I don't think it was true. I I think it was part that, but also part. Drawing maps around legacy uses.
So it's a combination.
Yeah, I think it's.
No, Eileen, do you disagree?
No, I'm agreeing.
Oh, so it's a combination.
Oh, well, they certainly weren't going to rezone areas that were being used. For. In real use.
Oh, yes. Lean over the owl. Um, Michelle the bear said in the division straight and I'm glad Pedro that you brought this up. That's always been in agreement, but I was one of the. The hope with regard to the marijuana. Welcome Bandusville Road. I did extensive research on the history of the area. Uh, my uncle, who was a couple years down the main, who's now ninety years old, was. A leader in the battle against the Nolan gravel bed that's up there. I I'm sixty-five years old and I grew up there. And I'm fearing that it wasn't. The developer, but that was beautiful farming. Now before we know, as a matter of fact, his kids. Used to play in that area. It was beautiful land. I told some of the neighbors across the street from New Orleans. I said, back in the day, if you could find your front door, you'd see how it's across the street down the gravel. Part of our conversation during that was, alright, this is what's there across the street. You don't want marijuana in the direction. What can go in there? And comments come, you know, it's bad that that area can't be provided for a housing. Because. Um, it's not what's done in town, so. So can you imagine a habitat project? If it's done right and before told it's twenty houses, it stays twenty houses, that would be a great, great thing. Be considered because Van de Zimbel Road is really, you have your special permit process and you have a slight planned business. And then people walk away. And so, no, the residents aren't out protected. Uh, but I take exception at the comment that nothing else could be done in the area, so that's why Nolan's gravel bed is there. No, that was beautiful farming. And probably today, you wouldn't even have touched it. We probably would have. You know, reserve that one. But what is another positive thing within there instead of another gravel bed, a dump, a PCB dump? Can be saved for. I only concern that would be the traffic, the traffic provided is something there already. But it is. But um again, I would like to a cop, if I could get a copy of the history.
There's, it was just a like two line.
All his research at the time that he was battling the planning board back fifty, decades ago on the gravel bed. And I read every piece of it. And if you read every piece of that history, if you read what. Was supposed to happen there, what's going on there, you would go, how do we like this? So, no, despite plan, we.
Are you raising an issue of enforcement?
No, it's it is. Because Chris explained how you have this. I know, I think it was Malcolm, he said that residents are protected by the special permit. In a way, we are, it's these. But then the special permit is issued and out of sight of the mind. You drive down Van de Zimbel. But what we don't want is Van de Zimbel road get worse. And so I think the industrial zones that are surrounded by the city there is. I did that one in town a few years ago. Why would you buy a house near an industrial area? I said, I didn't. I was born, I get up the house, they raised it, and all around it has this farm. An industrial zone.
Thank you. Oh, so yeah, so these guys, yeah.
And without any oversight, put a dump.
You like that?
I just, I mean, I like that race. Um, can you? Um, okay. Alright, well, I mean, I think it's worth looking at. So let's we'll take a look at the table of uses and um we can. I know Malcolm has a trying constraint and Malcolm, I didn't know if you wanted to um have a comments on the um. Community preservation plan, so it's okay that everyone will move to that. Um, so that's something for our intended right input to the speaking speed. With the current plan here and Chris, I didn't know if you wanted to purpose for Jeremy on this thing.
Goes through the summer year um. Um, our plan and part of it can be like a wish list if the committee has. Particularly things that are in the city, one of the three categories. Um, and I think that's the main thing. It gets updated every year with um. Uh, with any changes. Um, so that's not really what we're looking for. It's just. If there's something that um this board really wants to see happens, it I guess.
Jeremy, what we have online right now on the town website is the current one and you're changing that.
Yeah, and so the last one, that's what got updated from the previous year. And so the last one that will be. Like earmark more money in particular categories. So, so by law, we have to reserve ten percent uh of funds, uh the yearly funds. In each of the three categories. Thirty percent is not acceptable.
Spend or reserve.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, spend or reserve, uh meaning usually we're always spending at least ten percent. So it's not a thing, but if we didn't, then that money would be put aside for that category. Um, uh in a following year. Um, there's also five percent that we need to put aside for administrative. Um, uh costs, which is not spent and that goes back to the general. So it's thirty-five percent sort of like. Has to be put aside, but then the rest, the other sixty-five percent, you could say, like, we want all of that into one category. Um, and so like an example of that was Williams Town when they had um when C D was fairly new and they had a. Street need for housing, they just sort of blocked it all there. And um. You know, and so we talk about housing prices often, but the um CPC or the committee. Has not been willing or really interested in doing that sort of thing. Um, because, you know, I was like, yeah, yeah, for all that. And that, there wasn't even a segment to that. And then. I I think I said thirty percent last year. And so there was a second to that, it added it. Um, and of course, you know, we often end up spending more than that, but their but their. View of it is really that it's just there. We want to leave it open so that um. Uh, because we don't want to limit um any repulsions. Usually I'm pushing for the base putting aside a certain amount. The message board hasn't really, we want to see whatever. And of course, it doesn't, just because it's a sport, doesn't have.
This is the, this is the time of year that the CPC by law reviews every year, what are the community preservation needs? And goes out and talks to planning board and invites public comment at a public hearing. What's out there? What should we be planning for in in the. Next or future CPA rounds? What should be aware of, be we be aware of? Um, so. That's why we're here. So, and that's why the plan is written and updated every year.
So let's go to Malcolm, because I know Malcolm's got a time to start your carriage though.
Yeah, uh Jeremy, couldn't it be effective um if once the proposals come in? At that point, you say, uh, yeah, okay, here's proposals for a hundred percent of the funds, but these proposals. Uh, say for open space or historical, don't really measure up to what our housing needs are. So let's not fund all of those. Let's reserve some of this money for future years for affordable housing. Uh, it seems to me it would be better to weigh those options, uh you know, proposals versus future needs. After proposals come in than before proposals come in. I mean, you may say, let's reserve, you know, seventy-five percent of the money for affordable housing. But a dire need may come in for a repair of town hall that requires CPA funds or something like that. That uh um that you would be, uh you're precluding yourself from considering if you earmark the money all upfront. So my suggestion would be to wait until the proposals come in for the year. Weigh those proposals and then put forward the argument that says. Uh, it would be better to reserve some money for future affordable housing needs than um than to do these. Three or four proposals that are kind of on the bottom of 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 your list, Jeremy, or or, you know, the the committee's list.
I think in theory, it's it's a good idea, but in practice, it's, I think it's generally. Or or the committee made up of individuals necessarily just not fund. Programs because they're, you know. Uh, I don't know, because we don't see it as a great need. Um, I think generally, we're not. We're not recommending um projects to be funded or to go to town meeting because. They're not meeting like the criteria or they're or, you know, or something like that. It's.
Yeah, they're not ready. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's, I think it's hard. Once you have the individuals and the proposals before you, it becomes much harder to say no. Whereas and if you think there's a great need in the category. Right now, and this is only a plan for one year, right? So we're only talking about the funds for one year. We're not talking about from this year forward. Where um because this gets reviewed every year. Um. And and also too, I actually, I should say, it's not just thirty-five percent of the funds because we have a memorial field. And so anything that we borrowed against future.
That counts to ten percent.
Oh, that comes to the ten percent and it's just. I don't know, anyways, if it exceeds ten percent, then, you know.
Yeah.
So it's. Um. But yeah, I mean, I think I think it's, if you feel there's a real need, I think the easy time to to do it. Is at this stage, because I think once you have the individuals in front of you, then, you know, I mean, we're all human and, you know, people come. Yeah.
But if but if there's a real need, uh won't somebody come in uh and propose that to the CPA, what that need is?
But part of, part of what this does is that, like, if you were to say this percentage is available. Then they, I think, projects will feel much more optimistic, right? It's like, well, that's only in this category and we're in that category. So, you know, there's a lot more funds available, so. I mean.
But I mean, how many affordable housing projects has the CPA turn CPC turned down?
Yeah, and that's and that's always the argument. Um, like, that that is the argument that we see every time. Or that I see every time is that, you know, when have you turned anything down? And, well, I mean, the reality is, you know, um. You know, when have you turned anything down? And, well, I mean, the reality is, you know, um. Uh, different projects ask, ask for a certain amount and we don't always fund them for what they ask. I mean, that's happening with trust. And, um. But I, I mean, I think it's. I think it's, it's definitely tool. It's one of the, it's one of the big. Powers that the committee has beyond just being the gatekeeper, like nothing goes to town meeting without.
So, so just in terms of what this work can do, we can make a recommendation and that is it. And then you can. Present it, our representative on CPC, that recommendation, but whether or not the whole CPC would vote for it is a whole nother thing. So I think we have, want to be careful not to get too far in the weeds here. On the, the CPC and CPA.
Or you can all as individuals, go to the public hearing and tell them what you think as individuals.
I mean, I think it's, it's just more that this is a big tool that's there and it's, it's really like. If the select board has some big thing that they want to happen. And CPA funds are, because CPA funds are kind of special in a way and can really help to seed projects and make them happen. And so if the select board's like. And, you know, I mean, I don't know really if it's our board really do this, but. It is one of the things that's out there. So the select board could be like, hey, CPC, we really, you know, this is the thing.
Jeremy, um, one thing that I'm confused about the moment is. Are we, are we expecting to weigh in on our priorities now without having seen who submitted proposals?
Yeah.
Because that's very vague, because. It is a catch.
Four categories, right? I was just reviewing, alright, open space, historic resources, recreational land, community housing. That's it, right? So in terms of this board's priorities, we've been leaning into housing, right? Not to say that these other items are not important, but I think what, what we want to get to. Is do we want to make any kind of recommendation that there be more of a focus on housing and that a larger percentage be earmarked? For housing projects. I think that's what you're trying to get to.
Yeah, but I mean, it doesn't have to be, because I mean, we, like, this board really does touch everything, right?
Suppose we just have been doing priority planning. I guess I would like to know if anyone wants to make any kind of motion on, because we could like philosophically discuss this for hours.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, this, like this, last year, we had this huge discussion about housing on CPC. It went on like a good amount of time. And then. And then it was like, we didn't want, like, the only thing that we can do is. Put aside, you know, more money for.
Right.
And then we. So it was like, well, yeah, okay. And so, yes, we don't, we don't really turn down projects, but. The CPC doesn't in general captive to really make tough choices. Like, we're not really, we, we've been lucky enough that we've had enough funds to fund.
But if there were, say, 50% of the total funds, that would be the 35. Left out, and another 15 for other things, 50% that were recommended for housing, the, in the plan, the thought process is that. People want to apply under these funds would then have more. They would see there'd be more opportunity potentially to have competitive application, right? That's, that's the.
And I've, I've served on tons of arts funding panels, NEA, NEH, this, 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 the state arts councils of the kazoo. And I. I, I like the fact that I don't like. People interfering with the process of the committee evaluating the submissions. Because it's really, is up to you guys. To, after having a public hearing, hearing what the public wants. Hearing what we think is a priority, then the decision I'm throwing back to the committee to do it. As opposed to putting and saying, we really want to make a recommendation that 50% of the funds at minimum go to housing. We could do that. But ultimately, I would want you guys to be brave enough to say, if this proposal comes into you. That is just a knockout affordable housing project. And it's taking up. 70% of the funds. You would say this year, because of this particular thing, we would do it. But that's really a complicated decision to make. And I totally understand you want to give a little bit to everybody, but then sometimes when you just give a tiny bit to somebody, they can't do the project in the way that you want them to do it either. So they can be drowning in trying to reach the budget. So it's, it's a dance. And, um, I just. It's really complicated.
Well, I mean, we can certainly take an action to recommend that housing be prioritized above. Other applications. I mean, if that were. Or could make a sort of numeric value to it, or we can do nothing. Or we can all go individually and we can all go individually, I guess. What, what's the, what's the pleasure of the board members?
That's a question.
What is Chris?
What kind of projects? For ten town home first projects? Qualified for season. Sure. The establishment of new art.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. They, they are. But not dog tracks.
What about those?
Well, nobody's going to make a motion on this, then. We're on our own.
All right. So it doesn't sound like I'm in just one strong getting or another. This loss of, we've got lots of. Malcolm, thank you. You have to go.
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry. I have a conflict and I really do need to go. So Jeremy's gonna have to hold the board on the, uh, housing subcommittee discussion. Sorry about that, Jeremy. See you.
Bye. So, Jeremy, can I? Um, okay. Do we need any further discussion on this side of? So we decided we're, we're just take no action. Buy on the.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not feeling for, I mean, I. Felt much longer.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I have my personal opinion and I'll share that. Okay. Great. Um, and five town planners.
Yes, actually, three quick items tonight. I did email you all that the attorney general approved. All of the planning board's proposed owning bylaws that town meeting approved. So tho- those have all been approved by the attorney general. The only one that has not been approved was the citizen petition regarding the. Um, wireless telecommunication overlay district. Yeah, uh, that's still under review. And the AG also approved the, um. Modifications to the short-term rental bylaw to allow for renters to do it with the owner's permission. And the modifications to the driveway bylaw to allow for possible three curb cuts in certain situations. So, um.
When do those actually go into town?
I, I don't know. It. Takes some time to get them published, uh, through, you know, like on the E-code. The people who publish our E-code. I mean, they're in effect now. They're in effect.
That's the problem.
Yeah. Gotcha.
If you know someone who needs it, have them contact the county. This person will know that they're.
Um, they, they, they're approved and they have to be posted publicly. They can be objected to, but in a sense, they're in effect now. There still could be an objection to process or something. That's happened before.
Oh, yeah.
So that one.
Secondly, I emailed you all. The historic district commission apparently has in their applications or in their bylaws. Um, a provision to provide applications to the planning board. For informational purposes. And so the chair just realized that. We should, we should do that. I mean, he does a great job, but, um, so I did email to you.
The applications that the HTC received.
Firehouse here. That's primarily.
Exterior landscaping, as well as for the Mason Library. Restoration of the marble steps. The walkways and the proposed statue. And then finally, the September 14th meeting, the. The community preservation committee is holding a special application round and moves to meet that night to review step one applications. Your CPA special round. So that's a plan. So, uh, I'd look for this board to either reschedule or just take it off the calendar. The September 14th. So, any thoughts? The two.
Can, can I back up to the firehouse informational application? Have they? I, I don't understand the historic district commission's process. So can you explain, like, are they. Taking the plans that were provided and, and issuing some sort of approval? Or they have already done so?
Projects that. Would alter a listed historic building, a building that's listed on the local historic district. Must receive a certificate of appropriateness in order to move forward to building permit.
So. Did they issue that?
No, you've received the application. I don't believe they've acted yet.
Um, in terms of the firehouse application, it's amazing. And I'm very excited to see that building. Um, be restored. My only concern was that they're showing uplighting on the building and it really. As a. Where we really like tried to discourage uplighting and. I like. I, that is terrible lighting. I don't like that. What? As of just, yeah, yeah. So, um. I'd be interested in, I think, me and the board, if not, I would do it myself instead of recommendation to the historic district commission that they consider some other form of lighting.
You shouldn't say that.
Okay, all right. Do we want that to be official?
You can't, you can't, it wasn't. It's not an action item listed on the agenda. I'll find out when the historic district commission public hearing is.
Okay.
And let you know.
It is, um. It's a question whether or not issues. Overlap this board should be sent to the overlap. Stretch them. Six thousand trillion. Friends that come through here. For projects on.
I think we, we've discussed with them. I'm open to discussing it again, um, but just. And we're probably getting into board issues concerns, but, um.
I think the HTC meets on the 17th. So a week from tonight. I believe.
I wonder if you guys.
So let's go put in and. Board overlap, um.
Alright, you can discuss it at your next meeting if you want. I just wanted to. Put that out there that. The planning board won't be able to meet. That night.
Okay.
And you don't think that. Later.
In the evening.
So. Because you and Jeremy won't be there, that's why we can't meet? Is that what you're saying?
I think we should.
Yes, I suppose. What, I guess you could meet, yeah, sure. Feel free. Feel free. You can't meet here, but you could meet in another public location.
Or make it to a virtual meeting and meet.
Yeah. No, you're totally right, Jonathan. I'm sorry. You can't meet here.
Or you can. CDC needs that five.
I take back everything I can.
I don't feel compelled to make Chris work of like a 20-hour day.
Oh, I won't, I won't come. If you want to meet, feel free, but I won't be able to support you.
So, um, can we defer decision on this to the next meeting and just see if there's anything urgent on the agenda? And if we need to. And if we don't need to meet, we can. Um, we put off our business until the 28th of September.
Do we have a chance to discuss what the, um, agenda might be when Chris isn't here?
Oh, no.
I can do that.
So our step ones aren't due until the Monday after our next meeting. I was hoping. That maybe we would know how many possible things we might be. On 14th, but. I know we're probably gonna meet at least one. I'm sure it's gonna pass.
We'll make a decision on the 14th. Um, we'll make a decision on the 14th at the next meeting. Um, general, how the opportunity is discussion, we said we would, you know, put this back on as a, uh, a topic of discussion. Um, just to kind of keep the conversation going, um. In terms of anything specific or new, does anyone, uh, have any overt ideas around? How can we want to begin to think about for upcoming? Amendment season?
If we have more discussion. I'm telling you, I can't. And that discussion seems any concept on that soon. For them, it works, not just provide. So, certainly permanent conversation for people who. Concert in particular, music, that's like. Convocation or transition.
If a wooden smith by. SRO or bed sharing? Does it go that far?
What's a sorrow? I know what it is.
Danny Ramon.
I know.
Single room.
All right, um, is it a shared bathroom as well or is it kitchen?
Based upon. Here. One of the two.
So it would be endsweet rooms with a shared cooking area or could be, um, shared cooking and. For service.
And it is one of the things that's only went out. He's on.
Again, this is all in New York City. This. It's all public, public housing history. The, the, the large green is a songwriting history. New York City, they, for the city actually started to buy properties and provide it to the market to be. Starting to. For the place. And then you have songwriters that saw the opportunity at around the same time, then it turned into four places. But. It's not necessarily the point of the age for the management organization that. Or it seems to be. Or worship house.
Is there anyone from one of those organizations that would want to come and entertain with us? Just to educate us on what they're thinking and what they think work effectively? Cause I think that there may be some concern. Community wise and be good to educate ourselves.
I would if you put on your turn.
Okay, let, let's think about that for the end of September meeting. So it's about, uh. About six weeks before.
He gets them then. And choose, choose carefully from contract. It's that or. Please.
Uh, it may be that urgent, but we can't really move that much closer. So. Um. So, okay. And we were just having a discussion about anything up in the air. So I'm just trying to. Get someone, like, to schedule someone to come in. All right, uh, anything else?
Okay, well, I actually have a question.
Yes.
Two, I mean, do you want to sort of, um. I mean, I had a conversation about. About. Contract for CPC. But do you want to have other conversations with developers?
Do you have anyone in mind in particular? Because I was really.
Yeah, so, um, uh, Sam. Who, um, uh, was developing a town and now is not. And doing projects and waiting.
I mean, I think one other housing concept that Chris has mentioned to us, then we haven't really had any kind of full discussion on is whether or not we want to think about some sort of starter home district. I think we talked about it in terms of tiny homes and is there a means of encouraging that, you know, and I think.
What is the? But I think, you know, so, I mean, one of the things that's all we can do has trouble with is holding on to our youth. And whether it's just jobs, but jobs is a house employees and coming out on part of the top.
Which goes back to the question of whether it's industrial, so we need to keep a great job, but the jobs, people don't have this.
Well, it's all about.
But I mean, we're not talking about getting rid of business. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of this. I mean, and I think it's good to go through the use table because, I mean, maybe, you know, I mean, maybe there's a lot of uses that are just really undesirable even. You know, or maybe those things could be very small, very not, you know, so.
All subjective, but in terms of how things.
Oh, yeah, but I, but I, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, it brings a lot to the board from his, the kinds of conversation that, yeah, with development, it might be nice to have some of them.
If someone is interested in sharing information, absolutely, they should, you know, freak out. I don't know that I want to like trot every type of developer out in front of us and make them give us presentations, but absolutely open. If Sam wants to come and talk to us, we, we talked to you know, folks at Adrian here before, we talked with Unstart before, so you know, we are open to hearing these positions.
Oh, I mean, we, you know, over the last
fact, I think that would be we did it, and I think it was really great, you know, our developers come in and kind of give us their
Yeah.
their ideas about developing housing in town.
And that was one of the things that came up when the, when the Housing Subcommittee was talking about like the role, right? And that was one of the interesting things I thought was like, you know, could, you know, and that's what we were trying to get from the combined meeting. One of the ideas was like, well, what should we really be doing? And but that kind of thing was one of the discussions.
So, so in terms of general housing developers, I think Pedro made an excellent suggestion to like have that start at the subcommittee and if there's something really like valuable and important, we should be hearing that is going to and usually then maybe if that could come to the board, that would be helpful. And then we'll work to get someone who wants to represent that authority of fashion and so kind of help us with looking. Yes. Is this, or is this in concerns or is this under housing?
House, okay. So. This, excuse me, I'm new to this process, but I'm kind of I know it's allowed as an A, is that correct right now? Is there any discussion of a form of housing that I'm familiar with in LA and specifically in Ocean Park? It's like bungalow housing. It's like six small homes around the communal space. Very small, very interesting. The art, the landscaping makes it for privacy, the drive by, you don't see much people. It's amazing how private it is and how small those homes are. And I'm just, you know, whether it's called a tiny house, I mean, it could always be a bungalow and we decided to do that. There's something about the bringing in tiny houses. Cottage zoning. I mean, I just think it's a really user friendly housing that I'm familiar with incredibly. So I'm just wondering, I don't see anything like that.
Well, we haven't heard. Yeah, we have the plans. Presidential development, right? Roba Valo Fallon, there's. That's. And I actually had a really interesting meeting with Susan Witt with regard to Forest Row, which was also a bird, right? But it's a community land trust model. And I think there's some interesting, you may want to talk with her, the subcommittee. But she, you know, that model hasn't been replicated since Forest Row in great amounts, I know. She painted a small one in Europe. But. I think the she wants a property is on a similar community land trust model.
I think what I really started, I mean, sort of like, it's like a meeting. It looks like a meeting subdivision and and I mean, you brought this up when we were seeing North Plough Road, right? This whole cottage thing where it's like, let's strike it, split around. But it's
not a psychology that's common in rural areas, really. Got to see you again. I mean, doesn't mean that's somebody asked to do it.
You have to find the right info parcel to be able to work.
And shouldn't do it because the select board is the special public planning authority, which is one of the things that we should bring up again. Because they're clearly not the right choice. Even if they never talk about the bird. Any of the public hearing.
Wasn't that kind of, I mean, it's not quite that model, but what they were doing.
Rolling well out of a housing discussion, right? True.
Remember how we initially saw that?
Let's, let's not rehash all the old projects that already have a proposal. So yes, I, I think they're always a point that the cottage needs a particular right? But and yes, I do think we heard more effectively. And maybe that is a discussion we have is we have an earlier conversation about kind of like almost pre approving desirable sites for certain types of development and like signaling like we do with overlays, like this one might be developed well as a bird. That is something we should talk about.
Yeah, we'd love to deal with you. Given this is a sort of assignment. Now, if you think of an official for the town, that would be like getting an EU. Have something that's pre approved, affirmative or nothing, just go ahead and build it. I think that's really.
Yes.
You did, but it's gone. There it is.
It's, it's hard to hear again.
I'm sorry, okay. We're going to, we're going to move on to towards subcommittee updates, issues and concerns. And we've got, they understood that I was planning for implementation. This example, well, you remember, maybe that would be a third exception, the same with the market position discussion. Yeah. Under board issues. Was there anything else anybody had under housing subcommittee initiative? They're being assigned market developers?
Well, it's time to talk to the committee about what did you bring up?
The transfer tax.
What do you want to talk about?
I don't know about any, but you should be explain why we need that and why it's a good thing.
Well, I don't know if I'm the best person to get this long, well, after you shared that article around. Then while we were still in this discussion about it in the committee, I was something that I started to make my so I don't know if I'm the best person to sell that to. I mean, I do, I do have, I think, similar concerns I knew now that what it, what it could mean. It's maybe there's slightly different than yourself, but I, but I understand Michelle's point about it. I'm concerned about, you know, like, is there this exit from Nets? From Massachusetts, you know, and it's something like that, you know, exactly. So.
What research has been done by the committee or by the in terms of what?
What it does.
What restraints?
Well, I think that's, that's up for a discussion with the handsome select board.
But then we talked about what's on pages work. And you talk about whether it's residence.
Yeah, I mean, I think you need, you need exemptions for residency or? Yeah, I mean, yeah. And that's part of hopefully what they're going to discuss. I mean, it's, it's come out, you know, what kind of exemption?
And you got to.
So if it's out of the subcommittee, though, I mean, to be fair, it's Jeremy. If the select board's taken it up now. I don't know that other than public comment at the select board, the subcommittee is going to have much more say in the box. Are you thinking they would?
Planning board is one of the most important things in town.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it's, it's like the idea that it's going to be a driver fund to the trust.
So if we were going to weigh in on it, we would need to put it on the agenda as an item and we would need to proceed confirmation that we understand what the proposal is in its specific form, and then we would want to make a cure and opinion on it. Or I, I think we would need to, I'm not comfortable making a motion, and so I I've got one over. Maybe something you may not feel a lot of people, but I, I haven't taken this item.
Select board has helped to establish for affordable housing, this was one.
Yeah.
I thought there are a couple key ones, including this, I was going to go to the towns to do the research. There was a need to get some real numbers because we'll look at the implications of where it's work, where it's not, how do the economies work? I thought that was going to be something that I don't.
Think that was ever going to happen. I think what they were going to is the assessor to find out. To find out, like, at a different level, what is, would this have meant like last year or whatever year that it was? Yeah, but I, I agree that's what you're looking for, yes, but I don't know. Maybe Chris can speak to this. I don't know if that was going to really happen.
I think if we're going to have a big discussion, which is not like we potentially will, we should put this on the next agenda. Because we don't have it listed, we have this sort of like vague thing and you can't take any action. This is sort of like just performing right now.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's what it's, right, it's, it's, it's it is. It's going to be.
It was in his name.
You can narrow it to who exactly, what, I should say, what properties we want to track, right? Of a certain amount. If it's not, whatever. You know, and it seems like you can narrow it a lot of ways.
Yeah. Isn't your understanding that there is a very specific proposal, like?
No, I mean, it, it is. We, we can see the proposal, but it's got ranges on all kinds of things. And I, I'm I'm not sure, I, because I haven't listened to what the select board has. Sounds like they haven't decided anything, but part of the process, they're supposed to give a lot of input from the town, meaning from this and help form their, you know, thinking about this. And they have to, you know, once that happens, and then so has to go from meeting. And then once that, I mean, it still has to stay, you know, it's, you know, there's a lot of steps in it, but yeah, I mean, I don't think it's we can.
Be there even set before our meeting, it'll be inspiration. From my experience, given the people involved, importantly involved from the last.
In sort of things that happened with the housing subcommittee, I, I thought the I mean, it's the board does really have to look at it, but senior tax altering that, I mean. It's in the select or camps to take off and put it on agenda. Maybe that seems more clearly interesting.
Did we also, in terms of that compressed waiting, you know, because I can't hear that conversation before as well, like. Yeah. That too would be in the select board survey setting basis and things.
Yeah, I don't.
As far as follow up from the joint meeting on public engagement approach, Jackie and I were going to try and have a conversation, but I have not had.
No, Chris and I have had a little back and forth.
Okay.
I've garnered a fair amount of information about what transpired.
For the 2013, okay, I'm going to ask you like lean towards that and speak on.
What I just said?
So Jackie and Chris have had a conversation about how the master plan of public engagement started, right?
Correct, and it was very fruitful.
Okay.
Once we understood what we were discussing.
So in terms of.
Jackie asked me about the history and
you can.
The whole town.
Oh, it's going back to sixteen twenty, but it's.
Okay, so in terms of strategy, I think Jackie and Chris and I are going to kind of like work up an outline strategy. And then it's probably going to involve us each reaching out to our respective boards, but kind of going on a listening tour to maybe starting with the other boards and committees. And then, and, and then finding ways to engage the public broadly, that would be the goal. I don't want to want to try and be as inclusive as possible in listening to kind of where people are at in community on big issues, given kind of the progress that has been made on master plan thus far, which is tremendous.
And we'll come back to you with a, with an outline, the things that we're thinking about. On the fourteen.
We'll figure out.
I mean, one thing that came out of the problem, subcommittee, that Michelle had touched on in our last meeting.
It might have been here, but you, you may not have.
What? I think it was maybe it was, no, maybe it was. We were all here, so. But part of the comment that I made goes with that public engagement is that I, I made the comment that I thought that if the town really wants to see I mean, I remember what, what I meant by the comment. Which was if the town really wants to see like, you know, all, I mean, all people be having the opportunity to live in Great Barrier, I mean, people that work in Great Barrier and be able to live in Great Barrier. That I think that my quote was like, like, people are going to have to take a hit. And what I meant by that is that we're going to have to get to the place where we're willing. Right? And so I, and I was making that comment for, I don't think we're at that place like currently as a town that we're wanting to do. And so I think with the engagement, like, you know, and, and if it's specifically about master plan, but I, I was thinking more when we, when you initially brought it up, I thought of it more broadly, just about housing. That sort of thing. And I think we, like, the public doesn't often really understand why we're do, why we're proposing. And so I think that I'm really interested in how this public engagement goes. Um, like if we're especially able to get a wider swath of council. Eight. Um. Because usually there's, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of very um engaged citizens. But it's usually the same group. That always comes and it'd be, it'd be nice to engage a wider. Wider swath of the bar.
Yeah, with true listening session and it's and there's exchange of ideas and also. Knowledge, experience.
This goes to Michelle, I, you know, I'm I'm interested in us as council. Really like wanting. Things like this, but like. We may not want, you know, and so, and so then that's, so it's so it's good to, you know, if. Through this kind of engagement, we really figure out what what people really want.
So we're kind of having a generic question about how to engage the public, so this wouldn't really be a particular topic, did you wanna do a suggestion on how to engage the public, because that would be very valuable.
I think I, I found that was a point to do about just. No, actually, in the community, because I didn't have a sense. But if you really wanna engage that community, it would be going to. Exactly.
That's the idea.
What was early about this is not here.
It's going, it's like one of the early models presented by the twenty thirteen master. So I mean, it's only when they are. Just for me. That is service. Did you record it? With a smile?
No, it was at Ramstow, wasn't it?
No, it was at.
Ramstow wasn't open.
What any did, did wonderful job.
Okay, I was trying to bring this back around, so you're all.
Quickly, one thing I've I've been thinking about. Last years, we've had this ongoing housing thing going on on all of our agendas, but I wonder if it's worth working at other aspects. Of what. And people do. Like looking at somehow kind of an effect on open spaces now. I mean, that on parks. Having an effect on other things, but draft the certification. Wonder if this weren't, you know, us doing. Again, as individuals making presentations to the board, you guys, little things that maybe gave interest to us.
What is a planter?
No, I mean, it's, I just, we get. But there are other aspects to what we're responsible for, when people come to us, like telling us what they want to do with the town. But we as a group have, I think, our own business, and Chris can use us, I think that's sort of, that's what we get that. That is what they have. Uh, in his office, after the public, maybe we could help institute, yes, sort of use source for his office as well.
So zoning is. One very small way to implement. Town goals. Parties and there's meetings and there's volunteer, I mean, there's a lot of ways to. Accomplish all those things that are in the master plan, zoning work, one thing. And there is. What, twelve chapters or something like that, there's a lot of topics. That involve the planning, so. I'm. Really encouraging these meetings. In the neighborhood meetings and in other ways to think more broadly.
Thinking about this also in. In regard to planning for the master plan. And we can start to maybe in present conditions.
Chris gave us a really great update and summary of where we are. Benchmark against the master plan, like what progress has been made, and I I think that's a good reference document for us to refer to. You know, kind of like, what do we think has been. Completed or mostly completed, and is there more in our current. Circumstances that should be evaluated, you know, what has changed in our community that needs to be responded to? Um, and then there are things that haven't made much progress and not that they're not important, but maybe why have we?
Maybe they aren't important.
I mean, they are. Um, yes, so we'll definitely. I. Wider, but I just think that many conversations are opportunity.
Which one?
Well, no, I I, well, I'm super interested in, like, a lot of things we've discussed aren't really mine. But one of the things I'm super, super interested in is cycle.
What is this?
No, it's I want.
Scheme.
The most basic thing first, one, right?
Sure.
So. Yeah, I would. Maybe I'll go. I'll go first, so. Yeah.
I encourage you to go back to complete street summary.
Well, I know. Well, that has to be updated without.
Uh, what's the, what's the question?
Can be updated without.
To update the prioritization plan? Well, I would. Encourage you to go through at least a a neighborhood and public engagement.
No, 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 that's.
Process, yeah.
But you, but you could, but we could just update instead of be doing the whole thing.
That's a vague, yeah, I. Conditions change, things change, you'd have to. You wouldn't do anything, just. You'd have to look at comprehensively where we are, where we come from. What's appropriate now? Is that for Vegas?
Values for, yeah.
Sorry, we can't, we can't talk about that.
We have to put it on an agenda. Um, and there's nothing new for early hand code theory, but I will just suggest if anyone wants to get their council early in the morning, they're extremely of all people.
Is there seven, seven thirty two?
Is it the same one?
I don't know.
Kind of in the southwest corner.
You might see it fishing if you like. I haven't seen the one that rise, is there, is there one of it rising this year?
More than.
Yeah.
It it became pretty much a colony.
We're no longer thrilled, but it's. It's true, so sad. Oh, good.
Great. It, yeah. Um, okay, so it's in the speed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Michelle, the Bay Area Seventy Division Street, I just. Kind of referring to Pedro and Jared, you were saying that. Um, if I used it correctly, that. Sometimes there are people who aren't engaged. The board will hold a discussion and that sort of thing. I just happen to live in a community where every day we have people going to tap farm. Eating jugs of water, because they don't have clean water. I have a neighbor who's cleaning up on a board down at Raj, because we didn't have. You know, um, water, that's your, as I call it, from our East Stream, fire hydrant. Um, so people are under a lot of stress. But if you follow some kind of chambers, there is discussion. Um, I spent quite a bit of time in front of the kind of folks at office talking to people, because that includes the time, it's very important to. Discuss things with people. But I just want to say one thing, you know, it isn't that people don't care about. But it's human nature to be careful to. I have to go on my family's home stuff. And sometimes. By some of the initiatives that are going on, such as the real estate transfer, you know, mine. Don't. Somebody who has a home, you don't take them. That's not how we present it. The way I look at it is, I think. The great way to say it is. Like people. To hold in their wallets, and but instead I'm seeing some initiatives. Down in Great Barrier going, reaching into my wallet, taking the real estate transfer fee, or the tax being one. So a lot of it is how it's presented. Um, also, uh, planning board. The image of the planning board. I think. David, David, people in the community who are here like, like arson all the time, or they go in. Don't seem as approachable. They just lack the work, so I think community outreach is really important for this board, because we'll never believe. Uh, any one of us citizens appear what you. Um, unless you have a more worth it. So, like I said, maybe just step back a little bit, and there is some difference between the Great Barrier community. I think by community outreach, that's an excellent. Um, you have a good resource there, Chris has done it numerous times. I'm still getting questions about cooking much. Why are we using the water throughout your, you know? Last week I got the question, I always refer back to Chris's. Presentation on on Reed's Clean, you did on Reed's Cleaners, Hoots Garage. And I think the building has to be seated, and I think it was recorded and everything, there's certain links to people, I said, Chris did an excellent. Presentation on that, but that's a good example of how this is what it is, these are the facts, you know, look at it and then. Come back to Chris or I'm more nervous like board. And care me if I insult you. But like I said, when um taking a hit. Um, I'm a senior citizen. Just don't bring bitchy. I know when you're young, you think, everything's ahead of you, like, it's our ages, and you go, yeah, that's a lot, you know.
I'm flattered.
But I just, I just wanted to, I think you're.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody on Zoom wanting to join? Do raise your hand. All right. Seeing no answers, we'll adjourn at seven forty three, thank you, everybody.